Laura Johnson. Okay, all right, right. Oh.
Trustee Garrison. You'll have to press star six to unmute. On your telephone. We can't, you're muted, so you'll need to press star six on your telephone to unmute.
Did that work?
That did work. Perfect.
Okay.
I just want to verify that you're voice voting today.
I didn't understand what you said.
That you planned the voice vote today?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then Laura Johnson's about to join us, she hasn't.
Here, I just, every time I get into Zoom, it pops me out of Prime Gov, I don't know what the problem is here.
So where's Ted?
Ted was not reappointed. Diana Barry was appointed last Tuesday. To replace him.
Last time I saw him, we had a big ice storm, I was thinking, well, that guy had to make it home, I was thinking, bad things had happened.
Not as far as we know. Mitchell said Diana's gonna start at the next regular meeting.
That's correct, that's, that's the plan for the regularly scheduled May meeting, that's when we would swear in Diana.
And if we're still virtual, the swearing in, I'll just be, I'll meet with her in my office.
All right, so Secretary, we have a quorum, you want me to go ahead and call the meeting to order?
Can you go ahead and read the special instructions?
This meeting is taking place over a video conference, if the video conference is disconnected. Anytime during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the video connection is restored. Communication is unavailable to be restored within 15 minutes. Items remaining for consideration will be continued on May 5th today at 2:00 PM via video conference. And with that, call the meeting to order. Item number two is review and discuss proposed changes to the investment policy, Matt Boggs.
Yes, we have Doug Anderson on the line from Anco Consulting, and this is something that we need to periodically do, is to take a look at our investment policy. And Doug went through and made some changes, nothing major for this time around, but it's always good to make sure everything is up to date. And so Doug should be able to take us from there, Doug? Oh Doug, you're on mute.
Let's see, modern day Zoom call party file, sorry about that, good morning, everyone. Hope everybody had a, a great and relaxing weekend. As Matt said, we have an investment policy, it governs our day to day. Or not so much day to day, but it governs the important operational aspects of the OPEB trust, it instructs us on asset allocation, et cetera, and from time to time, it does need to be updated. So I have in your packet, you will have this, but I'm also going to share my screen to go over some of these changes, and like Matt said, these are none of these are tremendously important, if you think about the biggest issue about investment policy statement, in my opinion, is the governing ideas, and the biggest one is the asset allocation, which if you recall, in 2016, we did update. But we are not updating that today, so this is more of a procedural issue that needs to happen from time to time, and given our schedule, thought this would be a good time to review it, so this is a page that is similar to what we have right now, you can see that there's modest changes to the table of contents, this just updates automatically when we have changes to the pages, there's not much at all here. If you look at this, this is the same language, governing purpose and scope, responsibility of parties. And really, again, the most important parts of this document are remaining completely unchanged. In my mind, I think it's a great idea to review policy statements every three years, some folks say every five, I think that's probably too much, and some folks say every one year. And I think it's good to brush up on the, the high points of it, at least every year as a group. You will see here that there's a small issue here, I think investment committee should be capitalized. And that's done here also with investment managers. And then this makes it consistent with some of the other references we were making to parties. Specifically, investment consultant had been capitalized in the past, just, this is procedural only, nothing changes about how the policy is implemented. Or executed, given these changes. There are a few as, let's see, this is one here on page four, meet as required by the trust with, or as required with the trust and committee. And provide reports relative to the status of the portion of assets in which they manage and discuss, rather than they manage comma, so tiny little change there. In my mind, you'll see that there's investment diversification, no changes to these. Core fixed income took securities out because that's redundant in my mind. And we added Bloomberg to Barclays, Bloomberg, the financial services information company bought the Barclays index funds, so while Barclays index funds are still in around, they've been renamed. Same here is for high yield fixed income, Merrill Lynch, this is a little bit dated. Merrill Lynch is no longer an independent company, so it changed to this vernacular or this reference to their benchmark, same benchmark, different name in both, both of these cases. You'll see, you know, some small, small changes here, hyphenation. I think this is just a correction to some language in the past. Changed the word following liquidation standards to liquidity standards, I think that's a better description of that, and again, here's the most important part of the policy is as far as production of return and managing risk, and you'll see there are no changes here. None whatsoever, the asset allocation remains the same, and just to refresh everyone's memory here, the domestic equity target allocation is 60%. International equity is an additional 10%, and the remainder is in fixed income. So we have a 70/30 equity fixed income breakdown for this portfolio, same as we have, have had since 2016. Again, modest, modest changes here, and investment manager rather than money manager to make that consistent with prior pages. And this is a little bit different here, just changed the font to match what to match the rest of the document, again, no qualitative change to this section. And then just slightly streamlined this, the passive equity portfolio guideline was specific only to the S and P 500 and the Bloomberg Barclays, and so passive portfolio returns will replicate or slightly trail within the margin of fees. The return of the appropriate benchmark index, end of story. And this broadens it, because we do have a mid-cap benchmark or index fund, which wasn't addressed, so this sort of takes the passive portfolio. And it's, in the index fund guidelines, and that applies it across benchmarks, so I think that's a, an improvement. Modest changes here. Peer group is declining instead of down. And again, just a few capitalization issues here to change. That's, that is the extent, so I, to summarize, I would say that there were some grammatical changes. Benchmark index name updates and the change to the passive or the passive portfolio investment guideline to make sure that they're tracking the relevant benchmark index, and that's, that's really the complete summary of the suggested changes to the investment policy statement. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Doug? So I guess that we review and discuss, but we really don't, we I guess if we do, we have probably, we have any recommendations to change, other than what he has here? Seeing that I don't hear any, all right. All right, thank you Doug.
Well, it, it appears to me, based on what's on the trust agenda, that we're expected as an investment committee to recommend changes.
Yes. And I don't know how we can recommend, because the agenda does not call for that. Do we have an attorney on the, on the, on this witness?
In, in the past, I believe that we, we have made a, a motion to to, to recommend to the OPEB trust to approve the changes as presented by the investment consultant. Which was included in the, the packet, the proposed redlined version.
I am, I am definitely not an attorney, but I remember something similar to what Matt's saying.
All right, well then I would entertain such a motion.
I would so move.
All right, we got a motion by Neil. Second by Amy. Please record your votes.
I vote yes.
Hey Brent.
Spam.
Nikki's saying that we can't do it this way, since it was not on the agenda.
I really think she's right, I, I'm concerned, and since we're not making any extremely material changes to the to the investment policy, I, I think it might be better to just bring this back next month, we could have a brief investment committee meeting prior to the trust. Or well, I don't know, I, I suppose in the alternative, we could at the trust meeting approve changes to the investment policy, but I, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't feel good about this.
Okay, well then let's back up on this and I don't, to me, I think the idea is, we really can't do anything on that item, so we'll go to item number three then. And if we can make the adjustment, I'll go back and look at the agenda for our 11:30 meeting. And we might be able to approve it at that time, I don't know. But again, it, it needs to come from a full recommendation from the investor committee before we go to the to the trust itself, so we'll probably just have to do it next month. All right, recommend changes to large cap domestic equity fund. Item number three.
Yes, if you, if you recall, the trustees, that we had this on our February agenda, to take a look at that, we were not able to have those discussions at all, because if you recall, that was the day that the ice started moving in. Doug was not able to make it there for that meeting, and so waiting until May, we knew that we were gonna take these looks, looks at the investment policy, this would be, and so this item and the next item would be potential changes to our essentially the manager for the large cap and the mid-cap. And Doug has a presentation presented for each, and for each, there will be, the decision will be made to either make the recommended changes or to, to not approve those. If, if it is decided that there would be a change made, we do have a regularly, a OPEB meeting scheduled that anytime after 11:30 to where the OPEB, you could convene as the OPEB trust to approve those changes, so that we could get those in place, because some of these do involve money saving measures for the trust that Doug will outline in his presentation.
And Matt, just to be clear, this is not there's, there's no policy change, no investment policy change that's needed to do this, this is contemplated under both the old and new investment policy.
Absolutely, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Let's see, we find the proper documents here. I have a few. Let's see, can everyone see the document that says Fidelity versus Vanguard S and P 500 index? Just excellent, thank you. So I'm gonna go full screen here, so it's easier for everyone to see. As fiduciaries, we need to, from time to time, manage or review all of the costs involved with the management of the trust assets. And what we're talking about here are relatively small reductions in costs, but they are important. We're gonna take a look at two different funds here, we have two index funds. And what we are reviewing here is reflective of what's going on in the investment management marketplace. We have two index funds right now, and they're both managed by Vanguard, Vanguard has historically been known as the lowest cost passive investment manager for all but the very, very, very largest funds out there, we're talking about, you know, people who are allocating billions of dollars to these index funds. So what I'm gonna walk you through today is really something that is an evolution in the industry. Where Vanguard had been known as a, as the best, highest quality, lowest cost index fund manager out there, a few years ago, Fidelity sort of saw some writing on the wall. And decided that if they were going to protect their business from the encroachment of passive investing, because they are mostly active investors. They decided that they were gonna compete against Vanguard and use their size as an advantage and offer the same index funds virtually at a lower cost, and that's what we're looking at, we're looking at an S and P 500 index, which replication is not that difficult. Which is why they are so inexpensive, but comparing what we have had, which is Vanguard versus Fidelity, who is the new lowest cost provider. Probably a question that's coming up in, in folks' mind is, well, will Vanguard, when will Vanguard reduce their fees to match Fidelity? And I would have thought they would have done it already, but they have not, and I'm not hearing anything on the S and P 500 index fund or the mid-cap fund that tells me it's gonna happen anytime in the, the very near future. So what we're gonna go through is probably one of the least exciting investment manager comparisons, because these are the S and P 500 index, and the returns should be virtually the same. Here are the funds that we are comparing, the Vanguard 500 index Admiral share class, which is for large investors. And the S, and the Fidelity 500 index, you can see their ticker symbols here. And what you can also see here is their net expense ratio. So Vanguard is four, and Fidelity is two, they're actually a little bit lower than that. But you have to go at too many significant figures, and our system just only allows us to go to two numbers to the right of the decimal point, but in very broad terms, Fidelity is approaching the market and trying to take business away from Vanguard by offering the same product at half the cost, and that appeals to fiduciaries. As we look at this characteristic list, you'll notice how similar, not only these are to one another, but also to the index itself, which is what we would expect. These are highly resourced professional organizations that have the capability to build index portfolios to match or slightly outperform on a gross fee basis. So when we're looking at this, are the average market caps between all three very close, this is $173 billion average weighted market cap. And you can see that it's 173.6, 173.8, and 173.6. So virtually the same, you can see the P E ratio, price to book, all of these other financial ratios are spot on one another, and you can see that the allocations amongst sectors are also very, very close to one another and the benchmark. Market capitalization, these I would consider almost rounding errors, but if we look, 50.7% in giant. 34% in large cap, just under 15% in mid-cap. Small cap 0.17, across the board, these are virtually statistically identical to one another. Again, the index is built, it's cap weighted. Changes in the index are well telegraphed in advance. And that allows folks to build and maintain portfolios that do track the benchmark index very closely. Looking at this over time, the, the region, regional allocations, you notice that these are very close to one another, not. I mean, all of these have better than 99% in the US. So these other parts are very, very small portions of the index. And as we go to this, the picture in your mind, what these, what these two charts are showing you are a comparison of the index by holdings, style on the left-hand side, so this is the size of the companies on the vertical axis and the style of the companies, so value core, deep value, core value, core, core growth, and then high growth on the horizontal axis. And what might seem odd to you on this, or I see the blue for the Fidelity 500 index, but I don't see the Vanguard in yellow, and I don't see the S and P 500 in black, and the reason is, is that these portfolios are absolutely stacked, one on top of the other. So all three of the portfolios fall in the same range on the left-hand side, the other, when we do holdings-based style on the right-hand chart there, you can see how closely those are overlapping each other. The only reason you can tell that there's the S and P there is because instead of circles, we use blocks or squares for the S and P 500, and you could just kind of see the corners of that square sticking out beyond the circles, so what this tells us is by holdings and by returns based analysis of the holdings, identical portfolios. Here are the returns, this is really where we tell the returns, are they identical or not, and as we go, this is as of March 31st. So this is a very new chart, and it trails back to 10 years. And if you go back over a 10-year period of time, the index itself is the bottom round, 13.91%. The S and P five, or the Fidelity 500 index, and these are net of fees is 13.90, and you see the Vanguard 500 index fund at 13.88. You'll notice very similar pattern to these returns. As we go from the longer term, and we trace it over to the shorter term. And over these periods, especially since Fidelity has reduced their fee, that their returns on a net of fee basis are A, tracking very closely to the index, like within a basis point. And it is slightly higher than the Vanguard 500 index. And again, the portfolios are built to track the benchmark. And they're built to track the benchmark within the range of fees, and having a one and a half basis point fee versus, you know, three and a half basis points, it does make a difference. Small, but it does make a difference. And as we look at this year over year, you can see the pattern is about the same. Again, we, you should be seeing, if there was any difference here in this investment growth chart here, calendar year performance, if there was any difference in returns, you would notice it on here, but again, we have three lines that are stacked, one on top of the other, making two of them invisible. And then when we look at correlations, so over the correlation matrix between the Fidelity, Vanguard, and the S and P 500. This is over a 10-year period of time. Perfect positive correlation is 1.00. So this tells us that the correlations are absolutely on top of each other. And the bottom page here is the excess return. And again, you don't expect to see much here. The returns are gonna be so close, there's very little excess return that we can even show a statistical correlation. Again, more of the same. Should be three, if there was any difference here, you would see the second or the third dot here, but they are on top of each other, again, in risk reward space, in return space, in correlation space, identical portfolios. So without taking too much extra time here, my recommendation is that we switch from the Vanguard to the Fidelity fund to capture that cost savings going forward. I do have another document here, I don't wanna spoil our second review here, but if I can find it. One small thing that I think is an important figure here. If we look, the annual savings, because this is a $30 million allocation right now. The current expense ratios is four for Vanguard, it's one and a half for Fidelity. The annual fee for the Vanguard fund is $12,000, $12,025. The Fidelity annual fee is $4,510, so the net cost savings here is $7,500, $516 per year going forward.
So Doug, I do have a question about this, there used to be an old commercial, and at the end of it, you know, in the fine print, there would be this substantial penalty for early withdrawal.
Yes.
There's no penalty for pulling the money out of Vanguard and putting it into Fidelity.
No, but that brings up a great point, and how these funds are transitioned is, is very important. You, you, you're talking about a very important issue here, we wanna make sure that when we're doing this transition, that we maintain full market exposure. What if we were out of the market, you know, we, we sold the Vanguard, but we hadn't bought back in the Fidelity. And the market was up 1%. Well, that's a, that, that will, let's see, two and a half basis point savings, I mean, that's my math, I'm not real good with math, but suffice it to say, if we're out of the market on a 1% up day, then that's decades of fee savings.
Right.
Loss, so that part is important, and it's one that I'll have to be carefully coordinated with the custodian, and it might take two steps to do it, but if I do not feel like your custodian, which is Bank of Oklahoma, can do this, I will stop the process. Because I don't think that it's prudent to do so, I think they can, I believe they can, I've had conversations with them, but if I learn anything different, then I think that we would have to revisit this, because I don't wanna then I think that we would have to revisit this because I don't want to try to save two and a half basis points and accidentally lose, you know, 100 basis points. That's just not how.
Wondering if we can make our recommendation conditional.
I would be comfortable with that, yes.
Transitioning to fidelity in the event that our custodian can make this transition with no loss in market position.
And just to put it in the vernacular, market exposure. So that, that is my recommendation and that was not a planted suggestion, but it's perfect. I think you read my mind on that one to, to come up with the conditional approval.
So I would move that the investment committee recommend to the investment, to the OPEB trust, the switch to fidelity investments from Vanguard. If the custodian can make the change with no loss in market exposure.
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Record your votes.
I vote, I vote yes.
Neil Gerson votes yes. Item passes unanimously 4-0. All right, thank you. All right, item four, recommendation changes to midcap domestic equity index. Doug, back to you.
Thank you. To, this is similar, I wish I could say it was as simple. Unfortunately, it's a little bit less easy of a call here. But it's the same rough issue, just a, a different index fund. Remember we have the large cap or the S and P 500 index fund. And then a few years ago, we switched part of our midcap exposure, half of it actually to midcap index fund, and that's what we're talking about today. This is a smaller portfolio, it's roughly, or the large cap portfolio is $30 million. This one is about five. So potential cost savings are much lower with this portfolio. So that's one consideration. The other consideration is, you know, the, the midcap fund, which is very, very cheap for Vanguard is five basis points. Fidelity, again, this is two and a half, it reads three, but it's two and a half. And you see that the index funds are, you know, very large here, these are billions of dollars in both of these. Again, same issue as the other, but what you will notice here is that I showed the fidelity fund. And then next to that, I showed the Vanguard fund, these are both midcap index funds, meaning that they are designed to replicate the performance of a market index. The difference here is that fidelity uses the Russell midcap index to represent the midcap market. While Vanguard uses this CRSP US midcap index. And you'll notice just comparing fund to fund, you know, index fund, index fund, or the actual indexes to each other. You will notice that they are different in some ways. So the Russell midcap index has 819 holdings. The CRSP, which stands for the Center for Research into Securities Prices, US midcap index has 346 holdings. So very fewer holdings in this, if we go down to the next set of characteristics. Average market cap for the Russell is $17.8 billion. So that's the average size of the company within the index, whereas the CRSP is $24 billion. So a little bit bigger there, almost a third bigger than the portfolio. And you'll notice that as we go down to the characteristics, while fidelity is suitably tracking the Russell benchmark and while Vanguard is suitably tracking the CRSP benchmark, you will notice that they are slightly different in some areas. I'll point out that real estate is close, you'll see that information technology is 19.7 versus 20.2. So there are marginal differences, industrials is 1509 versus 1205. So there are modest differences here, but these are slightly different benchmarks. One thing I would like to point out here is that the Russell benchmark, as far as capitalization breakdown, half a percent in giant, 19.89 in large cap, 70.73% in midcap, and then 8.86 in small cap. Whereas you see here that there's no small cap exposure. There's no bleed over into the CRSP US small cap portfolio. So it's a little bit more delineated and the biggest impact you can see is the average weighted market cap of the Russell benchmark is lower than the CRSP. You'll see that this is regional allocation, again, 98% in the US equity market. So these are very close to each other despite how busy this chart looks here. And now remember that last time when we were looking at large caps, that all three of this, of this area chart here laid on top of each other, you'll notice here that they do not. The funds are different, you can see that, again, what I described on the previous page using numbers is shown here on this page with shapes and large tic-tac-toe boards. But again, the fidelity fund is a little bit broader diversified when it comes to capitalization, again, a little bit of bleed into large cap and into small cap. But the biggest thing is that the Vanguard fund does not go into the small cap area as defined by, by this classification scheme. And they are pretty close to each other on this page, within the same region, just not identical as it was with the S and P 500 index. You will see performance here, performance is variable. Fidelity is shown in the, the blue triangle, its index is in the black diamond. Vanguard is in the sort of this lime green triangle and its benchmark is in this, I believe that's a Pentagon, a gray Pentagon, yes it is. So what you'll notice that over the last year, A, returns were huge. One, this is for the year ended March 31 and these benchmarks were, or these funds were up 73.59% and 70.62. And fidelity was the one that led the way. If you look over the last two years, you can see 19.10. So it actually did underperform by 16 basis points. I can't tell you which one of these benchmarks or index funds will outperform in the future. You look back over the last nine years, 13.51 for fidelity and 13.40 for Vanguard. So there is a modest amount of outperformance. Looking on this slide shows the calendar year performance. So again, you know, nice outperformance on the calendar year to date here. But looking at this, it's kind of a mixed picture. So I have to say that on this one, I'm much more divided than I am on the large cap fund. I can't tell you exactly which return will be higher. I can't tell you which ones fee will be lower. And that's from a fiduciary perspective. No investment manager will guarantee or will put in writing what their returns will be in the future. The only thing that we really can bank on is what the fees will be. And so in this case, we know it's going to be lower, at least for the time being for fidelity. This one, again, you can see a modest, you know, kind of a hint or a shadow, if you will, of the Vanguard kind of peeking out from time to time from the fidelity fund. But again, for funds that invest in the midcap area of the marketplace, for all the differences that I described, their returns are very close to one another. Again, correlation matrix here, it's less, we're missing a little bit of it here because it doesn't go back all the way to 10 years. But you can see that even the benchmarks that, that we're showing here, so the CRSP versus the Russell, so the intersection of three and four here, 1.00. So for all of the intents and purposes, if the, if the fidelity does track their benchmark in, in history, historic terms, these two benchmarks are perfectly positively correlated with one another. And then same, but slightly different here. And you can see the returns here just a touch off from one another. Over the last three years, the return of fidelity was 14.74 versus 14.65. And these are net of fees, so they were slightly better of the last three years, 14.67 versus 14.6. That's over the last five years, so slightly better. Over the last seven years, however, 11.65, which underperformed the benchmark, 11.72. So in my fiduciary, putting on my fiduciary hat, the returns are the same in, in statistical terms. And the one thing that I wanted to go back to, where is it? Did I lose it? Apologize for the sheer number of windows I have opened up, a bad habit of that. But the savings on this one is significantly lower. It still is there, it's just not nearly as high, I believe it's, I can't believe I missed that. See here that the annual savings is, if we switch to fidelity from Vanguard, $1,338 per year. So net savings between the two would be just under $9,000 for the year going forward.
So Doug, I have a couple of questions. And the first one is a little bit of an odd analogy, but I have two grocery stores very close to my house, one is Crest and one is Walmart. And, you know, I could probably save, I don't know, $10, $15 on my grocery bill every week if I were to shop for the lowest priced things on my list from Walmart and the lowest priced things on my list from Crest. But my time is worth more to me than that, so I only usually go to one location or the other. And generally Walmart wins because they have more of what I need. Is there any economy of scale like that in having both of these mid and large cap funds with fidelity? Or is that really moot?
Yeah, that's a moot point. I mean, it's, I, these, let me put it in, in another term. So I have a client who actually custodies their assets at fidelity, right? I don't know if you know that, but fidelity has a large trust division that they custody assets. And Vanguard is so large that fidelity is offering to do a similar type transition that we're talking about today for all of their clients who have the Vanguard funds within their portfolios. They, they have identified 20,000 clients that they have to do the transition for. So there is no ability for us unless we are talking about billions of dollars in each of these to have any type of economy of scale.
Okay, so then my next question is, many times when we talk about our various investments, we talk about diversifying them. Is there any value in, I, I, I mean, this may seem like a silly question because both of these were with Vanguard. And now, you know, I'm asking, would it be better for one to be with fidelity and one to be with Vanguard to kind of hedge our bets a little bit? Is there any value in that?
I don't foresee either of these organizations having any.
Yes, that's, you know, part of this is they're so closely correlated that maybe there's no difference.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at it from sort of a business continuity issue, right? So I think about these, I'm not going to say that they will all, both of them be around forever. But I mean, you're really talking about, I didn't recognize the second name of the store, Crest, that we don't have those here. This is, this is Walmart versus Target, I would say that. They will both most likely be around 100 years from now.
Well, I do recognize them both as legacy companies, I mean, they're, they're a long time, yes.
Yeah, they, they are huge and I think it kind of, the fact that we're talking about two and a half basis points versus five basis points. I mean, clearly the winner in this price war that they're having is investors, right? And I would say for the S and P 500, that's an easy, easy solution. And the, the difference in the benchmark is what makes it hard for the midcap portfolio. I would say the most recognized of those two benchmarks for the industry standards, probably the Russell. The reason that Vanguard switched, they used to use the Russell, but they switched to the CRSP. This, this is really getting into the weeds on why this is happening. But Russell charges companies that, that, that use in, or that use their benchmarks for their index funds, they charge them money, right? So fidelity has to pay fees to Russell to have access to the data that they need. It's kind of a, it's almost a monopoly in some ways. And so Russell raises their fees occasionally. And the last time they went to Vanguard, they proposed a significant increase to their fees. And Vanguard says, we're, we're, we're not going to do that, we're Vanguard, we're going to pay what we have been paying. And fidelity, or I'm, I'm sorry, Russell said, no, this is what we're charging everyone. And Vanguard stuck to their guns and said, well, no. If we have to change our benchmark, we will. And so that's why they're using the CRSP benchmark instead of the Russell.
This is a little bit like when S and P want to go up on their, and Moody's want to go up on their fees and Fitch comes in and says, we'll give you a better price.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's nice. I mean, that's, that is monopoly or oligopoly busting practices. We like competition, right? That's, that's great. But CRSP has a long history as an academic institution. So they are not, definitely not as profit motivated as Russell is, and that's why we're having this discussion. I would say for my clients, almost all of them have moved forward with the S and P 500 with the same contingency you proposed Laura. And I would say it's about 50/50 on the midcap portfolio, just because the index is a complicating issue there. It's not as clear cut. I don't think it's wrong either way. You know, you can cite diversification, you can cite, you know, the returns have recently been slightly better with the fidelity fund. I would say if you had to put it on one definitive factor, it's the fee though. That is, that is the one thing that you know will be the same a year from now unless Vanguard changes and capitulates and reduces their fee. So that's, that's it, this one is a little bit harder. I mean, if you're looking for, you know, do I have to make a decision? I would say no, these are both reasonable and our fiduciary standard is reasonableness of the fees. But you know, if you're going to say, what, what is the most important factor? I would say the cost, I mean, that's, that's why this is brought to you. But you know, the size of the portfolio we're talking about, this is a savings of, you know, $1,338 per year going forward. I don't know, it's, it's real tough as, as your consultant to make a definitive, you know, a 100% definitive guarantee that fidelity will be better just because we don't know how, you know, the benchmarks will perform. You did bring up that diversification, I mean, I will say that the fidelity fund has a little bit more in small caps, so that's, you know, some additional diversification. Whereas the, the other fund does not. I don't think it's definitive though.
We picked this provider as the, the midcap provider. Small caps or large caps, so I hate to let that be what makes the definitive difference.
Yeah, that's, as soon as I said that, I, I thought, you know, that was a perfectly fair way to look at it. If we want midcap only exposure, we have it, right? We don't have the one that has the bleed over.
I wouldn't necessarily say I particularly want only midcap, but I do think that it's, it's a little bit. But I do think that it's it's a little bit disingenuous to say, you know, we're trading out, not necessarily because of the fees, but because of the exposure in the in the small and large cap market. Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's, I see what you're saying exactly.
Brent, I'd love to hear what you think.
I'm struggling with on the 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 first one, I'm not struggling with at all. This one, I'm struggling with it a little bit more just because of the.
Narrow.
Yeah, the narrowness of it. To me, I, you know, it's one of those, I'm kind of indifferent on this one. I part of me wants to just kind of leave it as it is. So on that one.
This is definitely something that we could return to in the future, just to see if there is any change in performance, but one versus the other. I'm happy to do that. But I understand where you guys are coming from. This is not a cut and dry decision here.
I mean, I I get this idea in my head that we're really sending a shot over the bow in our large cap decision to move to fidelity. We're showing Vanguard, by God, they should lower their fees. And then I think, yeah, we're pretty small fish in this pond.
With only $30 million, you know?
I'm not sure they'll consider this a shot across their bow.
Well, I will say we have seen some movement, you know, at the at the total fund level. Fidelity is winning assets away from Vanguard with this strategy, especially in the defined contribution world, where, you know, in the corporate 401k world, those committees are. Pardon?
Jumping at the chance.
Yeah, because I don't know if you follow the class action lawsuits against 401k committee members because they don't pick the cheapest one. But that's that's a different issue. So I'm hearing that we're probably that we're ready to go on the S and P 500, but there's no real impetus for the mid cap portfolio right now. Is that correct?
I think that's how I feel.
Definitely voted to recommend on the on the large cap. But yeah, I think that I'm ready to make a motion that we hold on the mid cap change, on any mid cap changes.
All right.
Trustee Johnson, is that like a deferral or are we just not going to take action?
No, we're taking action to recommend no changes to the mid.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion by Laura. Amy, Amy, Laura's second by Amy. Record your votes.
Trustee Garrison, you're muted. Press star six to unmute on your phone.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
All right. So that motion, the motion to not do anything, basically, has passed. So, thank you. With that, we've got the final items. I'm for, I will adjourn this meeting. And then we will, and I will pull up the agenda on the next one. So the 11 o'clock meeting is now officially adjourned, item number four. Now we'll go to our 11:30 meeting, and I probably need to read that again, right?
Correct. So are we going into a different Prime Gov meeting?
No. Yes. In Prime Gov, you'll.
In Prime Gov, yes.
You'll switch, go back, just hit back on your browser and select.
I've got it. So but on Zoom, we're staying in the same meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm getting in there now. I'll read the statement again. Now we're here for the Post Employment Benefits Trust meeting for Monday, April 5th, here at 11:30 or after. This meeting is taking place over video conference. If the video conference is disconnected anytime during the meeting, the meeting will be stopped and reconvened once the video connection is restored. Communication is unable to be restored within 15 minutes. Items remaining for consideration will be continued down to continue to April 5th, 2021 at 2 PM via video conference. And with that, let's see. We have called the meeting to order, and so first item was approve the investment committee recommended changes. We will pull that from the agenda, and we will bring that back at our next meeting. So we'll go to item three. We'll approve an investment committee recommended changes to large cap domestic index fund. Would the committee like to have a brief explanation, or we're just going to move it? I think we'll just move it. I got to move in a second. Any comments?
No, I just wanted to be on the record that the investment committee did recommend this. And I want that to be in the minutes of the actual OPEB trust.
All right, we'll be we'll be moving our large from Vanguard to fidelity, which was the recommendation. Subject to that, we have no changes to the, we don't have any loss market due to market changes. All right. Guess we need to get Mr. Garrison's vote.
Ah, yes.
All right. Based on that, it approves, item is approved four to zero. Item four would be to approve the investment committee recommended changes to the mid cap. However, investment committee decided not to act on that. So we will not, we'll go pass that item. And then the next item is we, do we have any comments from our trustees?
None from me.
Oh, are we not?
Vote to on item four to leave it the same?
Yeah, we need to take action.
You want to, oh, you want to make, you actually want to take, okay, I'm sorry. My apologies for that.
I would move to approve the investment committee recommendation to make no changes to the mid cap domestic equity index fund provider.
All right. We have a motion in a second. I'll please record your votes.
I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. And the motion passes unanimously. All right. My apologies for my mistake on that one. Item number five is adjournment. Do we have any comments? I just want to give every trustee minute opportunity to comment if they have any comments. Harry, none. 4:50, 11:55, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, everyone.